Board of Education meeting and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please silence and I'll, I'll say it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Oh my gosh. I'll start over again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You know, that's been my biggest fear is as I am up here speaking that I wouldn't remember the words. Welcome to my heck. Okay.
You did well. You're fine.
Yep. I'm over it. Okay, so our first item is the approval of the agenda. Motion. Has to be verbal, so first Garrett, Mr. Bracken, second.
Jody.
Jody Gillette, all in favor, show of hands. I see five, zero. Thank you, everyone. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Are there any additions to it at all? I don't think so, right?
I don't, I haven't seen any.
Okay, motion to approve consent agenda.
First Gary, second.
Second Jody.
Jody. Jody, it's one of your second from last meeting, we gotta get you in here.
I know it, I know, I'm gonna be very vocal.
Okay. Oh, oh, okay, all in favor of consent agenda, show of hands. Uh, five, zero. My screens are jumping around, I don't know where everyone is now.
Yeah, mine did too.
Okay. Uh, trying to make this a quick meeting, my, my report is going to be welcome to the meeting and on to other board members' reports.
Just real.
Anyone?
Um, the Monroe County School Board Association were in the midst of trying to um, pick out different chairs and, and co-chairs for the committees for next year and stuff. So we're, we're looking for folks that might be able to attend uh, any of the three main standing committees. Which are legislative affairs and exchange and labor relations. We're looking at people from different districts to try and, and take new positions on those versus the same people doing all, all of those things. So if there, you have an interest, let me know, we'll be working on that. We have a meeting Thursday to go over some of that stuff. Additionally, there's a, Kevin, I think you probably know this, NISBA is going to make a presentation to the president's meeting at the end of this month um, to see where, where, uh, where we stand with our, with our friends in New York State School Board Association and stuff. There's been, there's a few, well, I know Pittsburgh is no longer a member of uh, and there are other districts that are considering uh, whether or not it makes sense for their membership to continue. And I don't know that we've had a really extensive discussion about that. But we probably need to at some point in time, you know, after that meeting, perhaps.
Gary and or Rick, do you, do you know when the membership dues is due for NISBA?
I don't. Rick, do you know when we pay that bill?
Uh, I'd have to look, but it's either typically June or July. Of course, that may be the Monroe County School Boards too, I don't know, no.
Yeah, if you just don't, again, I would suggest we have a conversation before we pay that bill and see meeting at the end of the month goes. I don't know, Kevin, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I'd like to put that as a, a topic for our next meeting to, to discuss the, the value of that membership. And that should work out well because we would have had, I, I'll have that presentation from Rich Snyder for the, uh, who is the NISBA Executive Director. So I'll be able to come back and, and share with everyone. There, there was a disappointment in their ability to really advocate for us with regards to um, schools closing, school reopening. The budget vote. Kate, that, Dave, welcome.
Thank you.
You heard me.
I'm on my cellphone.
Okay, so we just lost your video feed from your computer, but we have your voice.
Okay, I'll try and get back on computer while you're going here.
Okay. So, so the, the, the concern is, we're, we're, our expectation is we have advocacy in Albany, but it doesn't seem to really happen. So Dave, you have to mute one of your devices. Got it? Perfect, Dave, can, can you hear us? Can we hear you?
One, two, three, four, five.
Yes, perfect, thank you.
So, thank you for your patience.
Ty, can you put on the record that Mr. Gervado returned at six fourteen? Okay, and um, Mr. Kincaid is gonna be joining us, so we'll, we'll make sure we document when that happens. Gary, I'm sorry, you wanna continue?
No, that, that's it, and I'll be, I'll be sitting in with you on that meeting with, with uh, NISBA later this month.
Great. Good, we have, we have a force. Not just childlike anymore. Okay, anything else, Gary?
Nothing.
Board member reports, Kate.
Um, yeah, I had um, fifth grade moving up ceremony, it was very nice and only emotional for me. Everybody else was just happy to be there, I guess. Um, but the teachers were amazing, it was great, um, and it was, it ran very smoothly. And then I also attended um, the Black Lives Matter rally down at Pinney Ponds. Um, just, you know, from a student perspective, you know, super impressive that those kids are out there doing what they're doing and, and putting themselves out there and representing our school so well. Um, I know it's a very touchy subject for a lot of people and a lot of people struggling with how to deal with it, but they are an amazing force in our, our district. So I was super impressed and, and happy to be there as they were representing our district.
Thank you. Mr. Maselli. Gillette.
No, nothing for me, winding down to my last few weeks and uh, nothing specific to report, though looking forward to results of the vote and candidate elections.
Awesome.
Thank you for bloating on that.
And Mr. Gervado.
I just wanna piggyback on what Kate said about the Black Lives Matter um, event at uh, Pinney Ponds. It was a nice, nice thing to see those kids speak so eloquently about their cause.
We do have some awesome students. Okay, so with that, um, on to superintendent report.
Thanks, Kevin. So, news and notes, last week, Rick gave a, a copy of the PowerPoint which you're actually gonna see tonight with the presentation. And I asked you to review that as a beginning point, if you had any questions about um, you know, what we're looking at in terms of the um, reserve fund. So um, I think he's gonna look from, for some direction from you tonight in terms of his presentation with, uh, what your thoughts about, are about moving forward. And we probably couldn't have a more interesting year in which to do that. But you know, I think Rick's done a nice job of trying to capture that in his PowerPoint and uh, and I think it'll help with our conversation, so. Mr. Wood, do you wanna uh, take, I don't, I, do you have control of the screen?
I'm gonna try to share the screen now.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, can everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's see if I can uh, make sure I see everybody here so I can get their questions. I think I got most of you. Okay, so again, uh, if you've done your homework, hello, Mr. Kincaid.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, sir.
And before I start, I'm a little disappointed that either um, Mr. Maselli or Mr. Bracken mentioned that we had a most exciting audit committee meeting that um, should help lead this discussion.
We didn't over, you know, overstep your time and, like.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So again, um, hopefully you've done your homework and uh, this presentation can go relatively smoothly and quickly. To Dan's point, uh, in years past, I have presented something similar and we, very similar to the long range plan, we get to a point of you know, here's the numbers, uh, and we don't get to the next step. The next step is, I really need from the board tonight, a direction on a particular rationale which will identify the amount of funds we can put into a reserve and what those reserve amounts should be. That is really driven by some of the state comptroller reports specific to us about, you know, potentially being overfunded. The reason they can say that is in part because we haven't gone to this next level. So tonight, I'm not gonna cover all of the reserves, but mainly those that I feel I need a direction from the board so that I can take that, put it into the reserve template that Dr. Tim's shared with me. And then, you know, the goal would be at the next meeting to have you approve that template, um, if I can get it done in time. So as we go through the presentation, I'm gonna breeze through quite a few of the different slides. The first one, again, it just talks a little bit about reserve funds, how they're authorized. And remember that they are, uh, there are specific rules for many of the different reserves. How are they acquired? Really, we look at excess revenue or the under expenditure. I think I've shared with you over the last year that it really is, it's the excess or deficiency of revenue over expense. Not necessarily, hey, you know what, we're 1.7 million under budget and we're, you know, 500,000 more in revenue. It's not, uh, it's not that calculation anymore. It's really looking at um, how much revenue did we receive versus how much um, did we spend? The next slide really, again, I think is important because these are the things that we should be considering as we make these decisions. So again, does it fit within the complement of our long range financial plan and, and capital plan? What's in the best interest of the taxpayers? And again, how do, do we evaluate those and do we feel that they're reasonable and necessary? These are the different reserves that we have. This is the presentation or the format that our auditors provide. I like it because it shares with you, we have three and now actually four reserves that are really, uh, we use on an annual basis to help offset those expenditures. Then we have those other reserves that are restricted for specific uses. So for example, the, what we call the EBLR, our liability tax, or and obviously our capital reserves. This slide is sharing with you historically what our balances have been. Again, that the green portion are those reserves that we use on an annual basis to help offset that budget. The blue ones are more uh, those that we have a set amount on or they're voter approved. This slide is really sharing, if we were not able to replenish the reserves, this is what we've identified that we would have to use to help balance our budget. So in the current fiscal year, we use 1.9 million dollars to help balance our budget. In the 2021, we've used a little over two. So the area that I wanna look at as we get into the first that I'd like your input on, is the workers' comp. And I really wanna focus on, if you look, notice, the maximum contribution is not defined. So historically, this is where we've been. And again, just um, I wanna just review how this chart works. You can see that this reserve was established in 2009. And then our beginning balance in 2010 is obviously the carryover at the ending balance. We earned $4,500 in interest. We did not identify offsetting an expense with that, nor did we increase that reserve in the, in the, end of that fiscal year so that we ended up with a beginning balance plus our reserves. If you look in 2011, uh, we earned about the same in um, interest revenue. We actually did use a portion to offset our reserve, but we were able to replenish that and then add some to get to a balance of 1 million. Any questions as to the way this chart or table works? Okay, so again, I'm gonna breeze through these, hopefully you've had an opportunity to look. Jody, this, these next couple slides, I had you in mind because many times you've asked, what's an appropriate amount? What is it compared to other uh, districts? This is the best information I have to provide that information. So again, what I've done is 2018, 2019, uh, I've shared where we are compared to the Monroe County districts that have this particular reserve. And it's shown as an X, as a percent of expense. So that was 18 and then 19, and then this is where we've been historically since 2009. So this is where I wanna get to. In prior years, we've sort of identified that, listen, we're gonna go four times our annual expense. If we were to do that in the current year, we would want to fund our reserve up to 1.7 million dollars. You'll notice that we're currently at the end of 2019 at 1.4. I had proposed the last couple years, a little bit different rationale that said, okay, because workers' comp is in part based on your payroll, let's take, let's use our rationale based on that payroll. So at a minimum, we're gonna fund it at 5% of our payroll. And if that were the case, we'd fund it at 1.9 million. Or we could go to a maximum of 10% of payroll, which would get us to 3.8. So you're probably asking, okay, Rick, where did you come up with the 5%, 10%? Honestly, I've, in the plans that I reviewed from other districts, those were the numbers. Do we, are we stuck at those numbers? No, you can certainly increase or decrease those. Those were just the numbers that I saw, uh, that sort of helped match where we were at a particular point in time. So what I'm asking from the board, before we get to the next slide, is do you have a preference as to what, which rationale you'd prefer to use so that I can incorporate that into the reserve plan?
So Rick, with that segue, I'm gonna jump in with what we just experienced with the audit committee. That ended about 15 minutes before this meeting started. And Mike, Mike, please help me um, relay this information accurately and stuff. In general, not only this worker, workers' compensation reserve, but also the unemployment and liability reserve, which Rick is going to get to. The thinking was um, because we, in the past, we've been able to kind of rely on historic data and, and trend analysis to kind of get us to, all right, what makes sense for this? However, given we are in a situation that has no precedent for school districts in the modern era, we, the, I think the audit committee was coming down on the side of, let's, let's go to a very conservative approach to make sure that these reserves are funded as best we can. And that we put the money in, out of these three reserves. Ones where we can um, for lack of a better term, manipulate, but move, adjust without a major, you know, without a major lift, without a major, you know, voter approval or, or those things, or where we put ourselves into a situation where I, I think with this one, we have to do anything we're gonna do within 60 days or of the end of the fiscal, the school fiscal year. So we, the audit committee was kind of really getting to, and this was a huge discussion, which I've, I, I haven't experienced an audit committee uh, very much, but um, there was a big discussion about what do we, how do we make sure we are covering ourselves on all these three bases where because of what we're dealing with, there could be claims and uh, lawsuits that not seen in the past. So Mike, please.
Yeah, just our audit committee meeting was interesting. The, there was a lot of discussion around the, the presentation you're looking at right now. I think everyone was very comfortable with some of the recommendations made concerning workman's comp and the unemployment reserve. And even to the extent the uh, retirement contribution, ERS, TRS. I think the one that dominated much of our time, and Gary, please help me out, was the liability reserve. Because uh, we're gonna get to that one and then one of the proposal here is to take, to cut it by 50%. And once Rick's done with that portion of it, I'll, everyone can chime in and share their thoughts on it. But right now, as, as everyone on this board knows, we're trying to navigate in, in completely uncharted waters. We don't know, there's two more markers coming in on the calendar as far as what we're gonna receive for funding. We're building a budget for 21, 2021, without knowing how much money we're gonna have. So there's, there was a feeling on, on my behalf and my evil echo that, that we need to have funds available in reserves that we can access if we need it. And then, so that was the big thing. And I know those are the ones that can be offset by operating expenses, which is workman's comp, unemployment, ERS and TRS. And then conversely, when you get into the liability reserve, it gets tough because that reserve is less flexible in terms of uses. But on the other hand, I think, given the environment, if there's ever a time when you're going to see lawsuits, it would be now. There's interest groups all over the state lining up to sue school districts and sue government, government municipalities, government organizations everywhere. Everything from special ed to, you know, how parks and government buildings have been utilized. So if there's ever a time when we almost don't wanna mess with the liability reserve, it might be now because everything's so uncharted. On the flip side, the liability reserve is one of the more um, restrictive reserves to put money into. So yeah, there was a 45 minute discussion that I've never seen in a audit committee meeting on exactly this topic. I will say that it seemed if we had to draw straws, and Gary, please correct me if I'm wrong, as I don't wanna speak for the committee inappropriately, seemed like there was a certain slant to a conservative, um, people wanted to be conservative because there was so much uncertainty. So Gary, please chime in.
Yeah, so if you're looking at this slide, and I agree, Mike, it was, it was a slant towards a more conservative approach. I think that meant we looked at Rick's proposed rationale versus our prior rationale as the way we kind of go forward from here. Because we wanted to make sure that we were certainly covering ourselves in these areas where we could see some significant change in the kind of activity um, that's been experienced, you know, from what's been experienced in the past. Rick, I, you, is that kind of where you caught the rest of the committee?
Yeah, I think you guys are spot on.
So it would be the proposed rationale being what the audit committee was kind of leaning towards versus how we used to do it, the prior rationale.
I would concur with what Gary said, for the uh, reserve targets, the proposed rationale is the way they wanted to go. Especially for the reserves that offered us flexibility, how we utilize those reserves. Given the uncertain financial times, we definitely don't wanna tie money up into reserves that whereas it's restricted into what we could use them for. Cause quite honestly, I don't know if anyone really knows what September's gonna look like or what economically what the governor's forecasts are gonna reveal in the checkpoints on the calendar for, in June and July. So it's just, uh, we're trying to maintain flexibility here and as well as do the right thing to manage our reserves. And it's tough because we just don't know, there's no certainty, and this has never happened before in our, in our lifetimes.
So Gary, Gary and Mike, thanks for sharing that information, that's extremely helpful.
Rick, when, when it comes to, if we're proposing a 5% or 10% of payroll rationale and we don't fund it to that level, does the comptroller see that as something negative against us?
Listen, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the comptroller. I'm sure they will find something so that, in my opinion, which is what theirs would be, is one, you're underfunded or um, you'd be underfunded, and if they wanna slap your hand for being underfunded, so be it.
Kevin.
One of the things with workers' comp is that there's a couple year lag on, on workers' comp with your experience factors. So i- if we do have a bad year, a lot of workers' comp claims, uh, that doesn't hit us until the, the preceding years. So if, my thought, and guys in the audit committee, if it doesn't fit in with, with the way your discussion happened, my thought would be, is, well, let's fund the other things that are more likely to occur sooner. That then this one that would, if there is complication due to COVID-19, it would be something that, that's two or three, two or three years down the road before our policy would, would, would be increased because of those claims.
Let me just be clear though, you're, I mean, what we're doing is setting parameters. Next week is when you'll identify based on the recommendation of, you know, superintendent as to how much to put in there. So what, in this particular case, what it's saying is if you were to, to, to look at the proposed rationale, you could go up to 3.8 or between 1.9 and 3.8.
So Kevin, I think, I think the rationale from the audit committee was the four times annual expense thing, given what you were saying as well, in terms of the fact that this is something that's gonna happen, you know, a year or two down the road from, from now. And we don't know the, the, you know, the kind of extent of it. That we needed to take a more conservative and, and build these reserves a little bit more than we have in the past. Because, you know, in the past, we kind of can get a sense for what this is gonna be. But two years from now, we could be, you know, bleeding money in workroom, workers' compensation cases based on our employees, you know, possibly coming down COVID. And they can prove it happened in the workplace. There's just, there's just so many liabilities out there right now with this that the, the audit committee was saying, all right, let's kind of bump this to a more conservative approach versus we know what's been happening, but eh, that's based on a different kind of world than we're in right now.
Hey Kevin, to be fair, uh, someone in the audit committee alluded to exactly what you just said and they were 100% right. There was an era of people, it seemed like people wanted to be conservative and prepare for, I don't wanna say the worst, but prepare for things that might not be ideal. But the other thing is, is the workers' comp reserve also offers us a lot of flexibility in terms of how it's used. And that was the other thing about this is what, what they, where they went down that road. That, that one specifically, the workers' comp reserve can be used to support operating expenses. So it's not like that money's buried and we can't ever use it for anything. But yeah, that was brought up directly, and the problem here is, it's something we wrestled with throughout that meeting, we just don't know what's gonna happen. We just don't know what's going to happen. We just don't know what September is going to look like and how do you plan for that? And now we're trying to make long-term financial plans based on what I hope to be a blip in the radar for 12 or 18 months, but.
Is it necessary to be long-term plans though? I mean, you can do this for one year and see where COVID takes us. Because I agree that it has less restraints, but it's still, I mean, going with a 10% still a quite a large amount of money if you want to do it for just one year. I'm assuming that's possible, Rick, right?
Yes, I mean, if the board feels as though, you know, say one, two years and we never get close or our workers' comp. I mean, right now, our, our expense for workers' comp is about 440,000. So to have 3.9 million in there for some may be a stretch. But again, if the board, we, we will review this on an annual basis. So you can certainly go back and say, you know what, given the, where we're at, we think that's a little high, we want to adjust the percentage or we want to do a different method.
I would think the rationale for this year is to just come up with a proposed percentage, whatever that is. And I'm not suggesting 10%, that seems high to me. But if what you're looking for right now is the rationale, then the rationale to me would be for one year, we increase based on a bit of risk and unknown. We revisit next year, but we don't go overboard because our trends don't show that we've been using it. And COVID would probably be a one-year, maybe two-year impact as far as we know anyway.
No, I would agree with you, Jody. I think that's, you know, certainly, let's, let's give ourselves some buffer in the event that we do get those kind of claims from people, you know, saying they caught COVID-19 in the district and as a, as a matter of their work in the district. But it's not something we need to necessarily do for a long term.
So I'm not sure how I'm going to put that in the template.
And I think, Rick.
Maybe just percentages, your proposed rationale is showing different percentages, five, seven and a half, 10%. And then have the board vote on what percentage seems appropriate for the amount. Based on actuals, you were saying what it's 400,000 a year. The, yeah, the comp reserves, you know, our, our balances have not been drastically reduced. There's, there's one dip in 2015. So if you do a proposed rationale of different percentage increments, have the board and you discuss. Is it for this year or is it for next year?
I mean, really, the intent is this is long range. So you want to be able to come up with a, a percentage that you're going to not change on an annual basis.
Yeah, but I think if we're considering COVID, that's too broad a stroke. Or this year, for the next two years, maybe we pick an amount. And then, then you get back into a long-range rationale. And maybe the rationale is just random percentages rather than a multiplier of annual expense. I don't know. Or, or do the annual expense and say the characteristics of four times annual expenses are normal, normal year, five times is years with health risks, you know, six times is unusual circumstances, whatever. And then give guidance for what those rationales are. And let the board pick each year, what year they think they're in. What the health characteristics are, I guess.
Rick, I think I must, I, I think I kind of missed that little nuance. That this would be longer term thing versus what do we want to do to make sure we're covered for the next year or two? So I, I mean, I, the four times annual expenses covered us well for a long time. Changing it to some percentage of payroll. You know, I sensed, and I think the Audit Committee sensed that, yeah, it probably makes sense just to make sure that we're in a good place for our unfortunate circumstances we're in now. But I don't know that it necessarily means this is a long-term plan for how we approach this one.
No, and I would actually argue that's the whole, I mean, that's one of the primary responsibilities of the board is in this financial stuff. I, I don't know that we've got to frame everything saying this is a long-term plan every year. Maybe you guys talk about reserves, you know?
I guess that's why I was going with a minimum and maximum. It covered you.
Yeah, Rick.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the Audit Committee was comfortable with the proposed rationale of some percentage between five and 10. Or whatever it was warranted on a, give a year-by-year basis. They were, the Audit Committee seemed comfortable with coming off of the four times annual expenses to the 5% of payroll at a minimum. People, and those numbers are very similar anyways. The Audit Committee was comfortable with that. I, I think we're kind of, I think we got into a situation where we talked a long time about stuff that really in the end of it, we weren't talking about a big difference in just financial dollars when it came down to it. Because we're just talking about the proposed rationale versus the prior rationale. We're actually not agreeing on numbers today.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll leave it up to you guys. I, I mean, we, whatever you guys, I mean, if you want to do an annual percentage with a four, five and six with a, I mean, I'm going to have to come up with a rationale.
No.
What's four or five or six?
I would propose that we, we, we look, your 5% of payroll. Minimum one, the 1.9, that gives us a little extra buffer than what we've had in the past. I would propose to the rest of the board that let's, let's make that step of changing from the four times annual expense, at least for the next year, to see where we end up with any kind of claiming that happens over, over the next 18 months.
Hey Rick.
Yes.
Hear me? So can we, in a worst-case scenario, can we transfer money in if, if things go haywire to this fund?
Well, depending upon the reserve that you, if you have surplus funds, Dave, at the end of the year, again, you should go to the amount, the maximum amount that you would identify. Okay? If you're talking about taking it from another reserve, it really doesn't matter. It's, you're trying to set a crock of an amount that you're, you're shooting for. Because that's what the comptroller is saying.
Yeah. My thought was if we go with the 1.7-ish, and to everyone's point, if we have a, a COVID outbreak and all of a sudden we're scrambling for money, then if we could pull from somewhere to the Band-Aid it, we would do that. I, I do think, you know, 10% is a little too much. So, you know, I do agree with the four times. Yeah, the 5% seems a little heavy for me, but that's why I was asking if we burned through that 1.7 because of whatever cases we have, you know, could we replenish in a disaster situation? So that's what I was asking.
I mean, ultimately, it's up to the board.
Yeah.
Man, I'll try to answer whatever you guys ask of me, but.
To be, to be honest, I'm kind of leaning toward the proposed rationale. I remember a few meetings back, it may have been during one of our first meetings when we were talking about long-term financial planning. We talked about the four-time annual expla- expense compared to the proposed rationale. And based on the flexibility we have with this reserve and also with the uncertain future ahead of us, with the information that Gary and Mike have shared from the Audit Committee and to Jody's points as well, I guess I'm leaning toward the proposed rationale, whether it be 5%, 6%, 7.5%, whatever the number may be. But that approach, I think is more fitting. That I think that piece fits our puzzle a little bit better right now. Based on this great discussion. What was that, Jody? I'm sorry.
And it's tied to payroll, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's better aligned with measuring against payroll, whatever percentage makes sense than to measure against expense, which has less correlation.
Absolutely. I totally agree.
Okay, so do you get, again, guys, I'm, you guys want to pick a particular percentage? Or do you want a minimum and maximum?
I'm okay with five.
So I, I, I can support five to 10% knowing that, that our goal, our immediate goal is, is the 5% range. So I, I, I can get on board with that. So thumbs up, down?
For, thumbs up for what?
For the, the five to 10%.
Proposed rationale.
Oh, don't, don't have to, we have to pick one of the five or 10, or we're saying five or 10? Or five and 10?
Five minimum and, and in the years where we can't fund it higher. But what the comptroller is asking us to do is give rationale for, for, for a range rather than a specific number. So, so what we're, our minimum that we want to carry for our workers' comp reserve would be 5% of the payroll. In good years, if we have money to put into it, then we go up to 10 years. Or if we see forecasts where we're going to need that, we can also go up to the 10%.
Okay.
The, the biggest crux of this entire thing, and we're going to see this as a repeated theme, is the decoupling of the rationale to an annual expense. And then the proposed rationale couples the funding to the percentage of payroll. That's what you're going to see as a recurring theme. And it just says a high and a low. It's, so Rick can translate this to policy to present to the comptroller. So we're not even picking a number at this point. We're just, we're picking the rationale of how we're going to tie where these numbers come from. So in this case, we're, we're saying that we're going to, we're, we're comfortable with the target for the reserves being somewhere between 5% of payroll and 10% of payroll versus four times, four times the annual expense. That sound right, Rick?
Spot on.
So that thumbs up from Jody, still up in the air? Two thumbs up. Okay, one down.
Ricky did not expect this out of the Audit Committee, that's for sure.
All right, moving on. All right, where are we at? Unemployment. Okay, this is almost exactly the same conversation for workers' comp except for the percentages are different. So again, you guys, I've shared this with you prior to the meeting. I'm going through that. Again, the prior rationale that was used in years past was four times the annual expense, which quite honestly, that was really the, it was four times what was budgeted. Over the last three to four years, our unemployment expenses have been lower than 25,000. One of our Audit Committee members asked about this particular reserve. And my response was April, May and June, our unemployment alone could be over $110,000. Right, Jamie? She's giving the head nod. So that being the case, you know, if we allowed for the four times the annual expense moving forward, you can only fund it up to 100,000. So that's, I just throw that in there as a little bit of, you know, his historical piece of where we are at right now, given you guys have, again, shown concern about what COVID-19 may do to a budget. That's an example of what it can do to the budget. So again, open it up to, you can change the annual expense or you can stay with a similar approach and go with a 2% or a 5%, which again, was what I've seen on the plans that I looked at.
Much of the discussion on this one was the same way. And it was about annual versus, annual expense versus payroll. And the other thing is, is the reserve fund is, is again, flexible. But yeah, this one was, the conversation was just about the same as the one we just had. How do we know what the right number is? We're just trying to set a policy here about where, where we'd like to be.
And it, and it's not a long-term policy. It's a, it's a, our stance based on, we have no idea. I mean, and as Rick alluded to, unemployment, holy smokes. Depending on what happens over the next six months with the state budget and what we do as far as a district to, you know, continue to do the work of the district. We have no idea what unemployment liability could be. I mean, it's, I don't even want to think of the worst case, but even, even a best case could be significantly different than what we faced in the, in, in the 10 years I've been doing this. So I think we need, again, and more, the Audit Committee was leaning towards, take a conservative approach for the short term. You know, we can always revisit it, but we need to make sure that we are covering the district's butt here on what could, you know, end up being some significant issues for us.
So I'll agree with the two to 5% range. I'd support that.
Yeah, I, I'm very comfortable, once again, supporting the proposed rationale. It's tied to payroll and the two to 5% seems very reasonable to get us through.
Okay, so I'm hearing proposed rationale?
Yeah, let's stay consistent across the measures as well too. I don't see a reason to deviate to different measurements. We just want what the proposed rationale of payroll in the last one, so.
Yep, that makes total sense.
All right, great.
Seven, seven thumbs up, seven thumbs up.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the retirement contribution reserve. Again, you look down at the bottom, maximum contribution is not defined under the, the general municipal law. Historically, this is where our numbers have been. Again, Jody, hopefully you took a lot of time and looked at all that data. And if we were to go four times the annual expense, it'd be 5.4. Again, proposed rationale is using a certain percentage, 15 or 20%. Again, you guys are more than welcome to change those.
There wasn't a lot of discussion on this one because it already been kind of had out. And the other thing is, four times annual expense and 15% of ERS payroll, there wasn't a significant difference in terms of the amount in there. And again, this is a flexible reserve.
Right. Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I don't necessarily see that. Oh geez, I, I guess from a economic standpoint, our contribution could change fairly significantly. And I don't know how that affects this one, Rick. I don't, I'm not sure I understand the effect that that, if a downturn in the economy, is our ERS contribution going to be significantly more?
It will. My, my thought is that I think you're going to see ERS and TRS rates start to spike if our economy doesn't come back. And that these will definitely increase.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't really get a chance to chat on this one much enough. But again, I think the, the thinking of the Audit Committee was, let's are on the side of conservative.
Then I guess I'm comfortable with the proposed rationale. Again, we're switching over to a payroll measurement and 15% is more than previous. So I'm good with 15 to 20% seems high, but since we're more kind of giving guidance on the rationale, 15 to 17 sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'm in full support of that as well. It aligns well.
Okay.
Again, we have flexibility with this too.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, well, thumbs up again.
All right, thank you. All right, TRS, there's really not much to talk about unless you guys really want to hammer this one. But when you look at the max contribution, this is really generated by what was written into law. And it's 2% of the prior year TRS salaries. And the balance can't exceed 10% of the total compensation. So the recommendation is to follow what's in the law.
Right.
Okay?
Good.
It sounds good.
Yep.
All right, so the next one is the liability reserve. Again, you can see the, there is a contribution max of greater of 15,000 or 3% of the total budget. We're well within that. Historically, this is where we've been. And even though this has a proposed rationale of 500,000, which I think Mike alluded to last time, a 50% reduction.
This one generated a lot of talk. And it was basically, there was one side of it that's. There was one side of it that said. We should reduce it, reallocate the funds because we're already protected. To a certain extent by our insurance. And. We could reallocate money as we needed to. And the other side of it was. There's a, if there's ever been an opportunity for litigation against governmental agencies, school districts, et cetera. Now's the time is when it's gonna happen. So do we want to reduce this? Do we want to reduce the liability? Reserve by 50% and there's compelling arguments both ways. In the end, I think conservatism kind of ruled the day because of uncertainty. I, that's where I stood with it, just basically leave it alone for now, for a year, and let's figure out where we stand. That was my opinion and my opinion only. I. So there was not a clear, I I don't, Gary, you can please chime in. I don't think there was a clear. Uh, decision on this one, exactly where people stood, or maybe there was and I missed it, but this one was, there was a lot of conversation on this, a lot.
Yeah, I think the conversation kind of. It's funny, it went around for a while. Um, and at the end of the day, it was. I- i- is it gonna make a big deal? Is it gonna make a big impact, one way or the other? If we move half of this. To another, or is it? You know, is it something we could do later if we needed to? So it was like, you know. Making this decision now, is it, is it something we need to do now? Excuse me, sorry. Or is it something that we could, you know? Look at it another time if we start getting in trouble. And is 500,000 gonna make a big difference? In the world of any of the other. Other reserves or in our, or in our budget and stuff, so. And and it speak to the ability to move. These monies around and stuff.
I think I can probably cut to the chase on this one pretty quick, because after the conversation, I did have an opportunity to go back and look at, you know, some of the finer points and. The fact of the matter is, in order, we're currently a little under a million. If you wanted to go to 500,000. The the other use of funds is this reserve may be unfunded with voter authorization. So my recommendation is this, we've got one more board meeting. There's no way, in my opinion, that we're gonna be able to put this out to voter authorization. Quickly. I, my recommendation is you stay at a million, you you look at this. I- in a year, see where we're at. That way. We're not scrambling to to try to, at some point, I don't know if there's a. A time limit on when to get this out, or whether you can do it at any point in time. My recommendation is to keep it at a million for now.
So, Rick, you clarified the discussion we're having. We weren't sure. So basically, you would have to dissolve this by the voter. Through the vote. And then re- and bring it back, but at a lower number, right? You can't transfer it and out.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was unclear. I'm glad you got that. So we can't really do anything about this anyways.
Oh, yeah, so given that, I, my recommendations would stand pat.
Think that's all we can do is stand pat.
I'm, I'm good with that as well. That makes total sense.
All right, great. These are just the components. You'll see these hopefully next week. And dare I ask? Any questions?
Dare I ask? That's where your lead is supposed to be. Any questions?
Thank you for all the information. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I thank you guys for taking the time to review that and um, hash this out so that we can.
You know, Rick, I I really, when I went through the presentation, when you sent it out to us, I really appreciate the Jody graphs as well, the bar graphs. That really, I'm always very interested in seeing where we stand with other districts and how that money and how these reserves are being used, so. Thanks for that visual, taking the time to put that together. It's very helpful.
It is. It's great context to compare districts and to see year to year.
And absolutely. And Mike and Gary, thanks for your um, insights with the audit committee meeting today. You know, tying that in. Makes a lot of sense and is appreciated.
That was a, that was a, that was probably one of the more. Insightful conversations in an audit committee that we've had, so. Uh, you know, certainly that, the timing of this and that was. You know, extremely. It's it's good timing. I mean, it's good timing to have that conversation with those outside. You know, committee members and stuff to inform this discussion, so, yeah. It's a.
Good work. Good work.
So Dan, you're, you're on again. I I muted you. Can you unmute yourself?
Um. I can. All right. Thanks, Rick. I I I know that's his passion. Loves it. All right, so uh, we, uh, in news and notes, we shared, we did that we pulled one of our second reads out. Uh, the middle school's done a really good job at, uh, I think. Jody. Might have asked for more detail on other districts comparison notes. We'll have that for you before the end of the week. Uh, Jim Santola's done a good job with it, but for now, we have um, Cory and I believe Jonathan are on the panel with us. Uh, who are gonna take some time to go over the student and technology policies as our second read. And um, I believe Mike and Kate probably uh, had some input on the um. Subcommittee level with that as well. So I don't know who's going first, Jonathan or Cory? Am I go, Jonathan?
Yeah, I can go, Dan. Thank you for, everyone. Um, so what we, what I submitted on Friday. Was basically a cover memo with the four policies. The cell phone policy was pulled out of that one. But there weren't any, there weren't substantial changes, or actually any changes, from the policies that I submitted for the first read. The personal identifying information and the data networks and security access. And then the ed law 2D policies, they all correspond with one another. And essentially complete our suite of technology policies that will help us pass an audit. Um, from the controller, at least from the audits that I was reading last year when we started reviewing all of the um, technology policies. And then the student physical policy is really just an update of. All of the practices that we have put in place since 2006, which was the last policy update. Uh, we reviewed, Tim and his team reviewed that policy and everything contained in there um, by Erie One Boses. Were practices that we already have in place. They just either weren't contained in the 2006 version or had come about since then. Cory or Tim, if you want to add anything to those policies that I've mentioned?
From my perspective, John, had you captured it uh, accurately?
Or it's gotta be unmuted?
Sorry, specifically the uh, PII policy. Um, Erie One put this out. We made some minor changes to it, but um. You know, the the news. Last week, I believe, was that this was pushed back while it was supposed to be adopted by July 1. We now have until October 1st, but I I hope that we can get ahead of that curve. Uh, just given all the work that we've done, you know, on this last year and then transitioning over the, to the 1920s clear.
So they are submitted for a second reading today. I had not received uh, any questions over the weekend or since. The last board meeting, but I, we're open to answering any questions you may have if. If you have any, since you've had a chance to review them.
Any further questions?
I reviewed these. I had no problem with any of them. They were more of a. Required Erie One boilerplate kind, and I didn't get into. The language of the, of the documentation, just because I don't want to. Risk uh. Weakening the document anyway by changing words, so.
So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
First, Gary, second. You gotta be, uh, you're unmuted, Greg.
Sorry about that. I'll second the motion.
Okay, seconded, Mr. Kincaid. All in favor? Show of hands. Looks like 7-0. Not that, Mr. Vinkwich? Okay. So, meeting evaluation, I I, Cory, thank you so much. Things went uh, much smoother today. We 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 did a little uh, check. And discovered that it was that that both Cory and I last time have been unmuting and muting and and conflicting with each other, so he would. Undo what I did and I would undo what he did and and we figured that out and it went much smoother today. So thank you, Mr. Allen. Any other uh? Comments for meeting evaluation?
No, all good.
Okay, so, Mr. Allen, can you uh, bring your voice back?
Yes, sir.
So this meeting is gonna stay open and we have to return to it after our executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so everyone has a link to the executive session, correct?
Yep, motion to move to executive.
Okay.
I'll second them.
Second, Mr. Kincaid, all in favor?
Aye.
Kevin? Kevin? I didn't get a, I didn't get a link to executive.
Okay, I will send it to you and and we'll see you in that meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the MOA as discussed in executive session.
I'll second it.
Seconding, Mr. Kincaid. All in favor? Show of hands. Mr. Rasselli is here, so. That's six. Anyone against? Start over again. Okay, all in favor? Show of hands, please.
Well, this is for what we discussed about personnel, right?
Correct. So, okay. Mr. Rasselli, is your hand up? Okay, so that's seven no. Seven yes, zero no's. Oh, is that a no, Kate? Okay. Seven oh. Got it. Okay. Motion to adjourn. Jody first.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, Mr. Fracken, all in favor? Seven oh. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so everybody.
Take care.
I don't, the reason I've been muted this whole time is I have four dogs in my house and all they do is bark.
Have a good night, everyone.
Bye, guys.
All right, y'all.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.